Brian.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The music, but that has been replaced.
What had?
The tank.
It has been?
Yep.
Okay.
Can you hear us on Zoom?
Yes, I can hear you guys.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Take it over.
Good morning. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. You don't, you don't want me around you.
That's fine. Just wanted to make sure you could hear us anyways. Thank you for.
Can you guys hear me okay on your end?
John, we can, we can hear you and we just saw you on your headset. Hopefully you'll be able to share a screen and do the things you need to do.
Awesome. Alrighty. Well, yeah, I know before we hop in, I just wanted to thank everyone for giving me your time today. Kind of how today all goes, but we'll keep.
We started the meeting, we will start right at nine.
Okay, perfect.
May you're first up, okay? So I'll, I'll keep you once we're ready, alright?
Yep, just let me know.
See you tomorrow.
You're not joining us today? Just gonna see you tomorrow?
Okay, thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Yes, most of you. Morning, Jason.
Morning. I was up at five thirty. I just lost track of time at the gym.
You don't technically sleep?
Nope.
You're right.
Probably. No, I've been up since five thirty. I, I get up, uh, try and get two hours in at the gym. I spent a little too long there. I mean, I, I wish I didn't have to, but this gut here says I have to, so. I stared at a pizza and gained five pounds, so. I stared at a pizza and I gained five pounds, so. Yeah. Um, my doctor tried to get me on them. Uh, I have a hard time wanting to because it kill, it kills muscle. Like, it just eats. Yeah, that's.
I know, it's like, I don't know.
I mean, I'm, I'm about. Six months in and lost about thirty pounds, but.
Thank you. Very sorry to get the agenda this morning there. I'll, uh, very welcome back. I'm hoping you're well. Appreciate it. I, I know you've been looking at me very cautiously on your eyeballs, so. Appreciate your attendance. Uh, trustee Appi is with us today, but on Zoom she is under the weather. Um, we did double check. She can see us and she's waving at us. And this morning's agenda, uh, I asked, uh, John McKenna from, uh, Text My Gov. As you've heard me say, a couple of meetings there, uh, I've been looking into better ways to communicate with the public. Says nothing will be moving on or doing anything on now. Uh, obviously that's a budgetary angle or otherwise for consideration maybe next year as a potential option. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to you, John. Uh, Ken, Terry, you have a question? Do you want to do roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. Roll call.
Supervisor Hill?
Yeah, here.
Trustee Appi. He's on Zoom.
Yeah.
Trustee Newton?
Here.
Clerk Slyer?
Yes.
Treasurer Hoover?
Here. Thank you. Thanks for catching up. Uh, John, uh, we're hoping about, uh, ten minutes to show a presentation here, um, for this. So go ahead, John. Do you have the floor?
Awesome. Thank you, Brian. Yeah, I know. Again, I appreciate you guys, uh, allowing me to join your meeting this morning. Again, um, I'll keep it short and sweet for, I know my time here is limited, so. Um, if anyone has any questions, feel free to just let me know. So I'll go ahead and share my screen and just let me know when this is coming through for you.
We can see it.
Awesome. Yeah, so, uh, first things first, Text My Gov, it's, it's really in the name. Um, so we only work exclusively, um, with local governments. Um, and through conversations with Ryan, we, we found that, um, there, there's kind of a, a few, um, lapses as far as, um, communications go. So. Really, what, what Text My Gov is in a nutshell is it's a two-way texting platform that will simply allow the residents to text and to find information. Um, this can be used for trash questions, animal licenses, things of that nature. And the overall goal is to help reduce call volumes that come into the office. Um, residents are also able to report issues from there. The system will compile the data, send it over to the correct department. We found that this would be useful, um, regarding Swimmer's Edge. Um, and virtually any issue that can be reported to, um, the township. And then lastly, we, we have our text alerts. Um, this will give. The township another avenue to push out information to the residents all through text notifications. Uh, this was found to be useful for special events. Um, Higgins Lake Run newsletters. Um, and then, um, lastly, for our notification side, we, we have a map feature. That allows you guys to highlight and push out mass text alerts to targeted areas within the township as well. Then, um, as conversations go on in the future, really, if there's anything that I want you guys to take away from using our service, it's just how simple it is to actually utilize. Uh, we want to make it so that our, our current clients in Michigan and our oncoming clients in Michigan didn't need IT backgrounds to actually utilize our tool. Um, so you'll be pleasantly surprised with how simple it is to use in the future. Um, and then one thing that really sets us apart is we're completely web-based. Um, so we're not an application, so we'll provide you guys with web-based logins. Then for the residents, all they need is a cell phone. Um, to interact and receive notifications. And we're, we're seeing a lot of our older populace in Michigan using flip phones to interact with the system, receive notifications as well. Then, uh, of course, if you guys find that this is a good fit, um, we do provide unlimited training and support for any department that wants to get their hands on it. So. Um, of course, what we, we encourage as many departments as possible to utilize the system when rolling out a, a tool like this, so. And here's just a few of our current clients in Michigan. You guys may be familiar with, with some of these, um, different counties and townships. So. We're, we're starting to grow rapidly in the state of Michigan. We're, we're really excited to see where everyone goes with our tool, so. Any questions so far? I know I'm kind of dropping a lot of information on you guys.
That's, I have an audience question.
Sure, so. Yeah.
I'll relay it.
Where, where are they from? They're not in Michigan.
Uh, she asked, where are you from? Text my gov.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback. Could you repeat that question, please?
Right, where, where are you from? Your company?
Yeah, great question. So we're, we're just located in northern Utah, so we're, we're just on the border of Idaho and Cache Valley. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of it, but, but we're, we're a bit of ways away from Michigan, so.
Okay, thank you. Second question?
Yeah.
Recommendation for how we educate or inform the community about this, so they know how to use it? How would we inform and educate the community?
She's asking, how would we inform and educate the community, John? I think I saw your media packet, but go ahead.
Yeah, tha- that's a great question. Um, so, yeah, and Ryan kind of hit the nail on the head with that. So we, we do have a customized media kit. Um, and that basically is just used for our marketing materials. So we can create flyers, um, post them on news, newsletters, social media platforms, things like that. And then. I'll kind of show you, uh, another integration that we have that, that's a requirement when signing on with Text My Gov. Um, it is this, it's Big Rapids Township. Um, it's this website coming through for you guys. Yeah, so to the right-hand side, um, you'll notice that there is a widget. So this widget is, uh, again, a requirement to post on the website when signing on. Um, and it gives the residents all the information they need to know about the system. Um, so you can see. For the township text notifications, all they have to do is text BRT alerts to the short code number that we allocate to you guys. Um, they can also just put in their phone number as well. So this is just my phone number. And then from there, they just press opt-in and then it opts them into the system. And then, and it's, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was copying.
All right, you're, you're totally fine. Then I'll briefly touch on our, our marketing materials. Um, can see, we, we can customize the, and tailor these marketing materials to you guys. Um, and again, it gives all the information the residents need. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
At this point. Very good, John. You can continue.
Awesome. Yeah, and then, um, really just to kind of get you guys familiar with Text My Gov, it, the best way to really show it to you is just to have you try it out. Um, if you guys have your cell phones handy, if you want to text hi to this phone number below.
I can get it.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Yeah, that, that was me. I said, I can get it. Some of the, inside this word brick building and, and some of the signals are poor at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, tha- that's totally fine. Um, and again, you guys can try it out later if you guys can't get a response for, but for the people that do text and just let me know when you receive that, that text back.
I received a text back.
Awesome. And I guess based off of just face value, what are your thoughts on having residents text in to find information? Do you feel like that, that could be useful as far as call volume reduction goes?
I don't know so much about call volume reduction, but I believe that there are a lot of people who are more comfortable with texting to get an answer than they are even calling and having a conversation.
Yeah.
I think it definitely would be useful.
Right. Yeah, and, and that's really the whole goal, right? We, we want to, um, not only give the residents another avenue, um, for communication, but we also want to help, um, out on your guys' end as far as. Um, saving phone calls and whatnot. So that's kind of the whole goal there, but, um, yeah, I, I, I know we, we're kind of getting there on time. I- if you guys like, we can show you the backend or, or we can leave it at that. And then from there, continue conversations down the line. It's really up to you, but tha- there's three sides that we can look at, just the, uh, reporting issues, finding information, receiving alerts.
I have a audience question.
Are, is everything confidential? There's no advertising coming to my phone?
The, the question is, is everything confidential and no advertising coming in off the text stream?
Yeah, tha- that's a great question. So everything that comes in or out of the system is owned by the user. So any information that you guys have, um, we don't own. Um, and we're secured through AWS GovCloud. Um, so we, we wouldn't sell your information. We don't use your information. That's all owned through the township, so.
Thank you. That's your question, John. Does anybody, you want to see the backend of this board or?
Yeah, yeah. Let me go ahead and pull that up. Cool. Yeah, so let's just go ahead and go to the front page. Yeah, so this is the dashboard of, of Text My Gov. Obviously, if it was from your guys' point of view. It would have the name of the township. We'd purchase a local phone number for you. And then this is the log, so this is going to track every single text message that comes in or out of the system. Um, and so if you guys are, we, we are FOIA compliant, so if you guys are ever submitted to like a FOIA records request, you'd be able to export this data with dates, timestamps, all that good stuff. Um, you guys can also reply if you'd like. I don't know who's going to receive this message, but. And you guys can also, um, add a remove or do not reply message as well, so. One of you is going to receive this text message. I don't know who it is, but, um, yeah, and there's a, a few sides that we can look at today. We, we can look at the interactive notifications. Um, I, I guess which one would you guys like to start with?
More?
The interactive notifications?
Interactive. Interactive is what I'm hearing.
So the interactive is just residents texting in with commonly asked questions. And then notifications is our push outside. Um, so this will just give you guys the opportunity to push out mass text alerts to the residents.
I'm, I'm certainly interested in that, but you and I have seen the notification portion because the only avenue we have is. Website and of course Facebook, which is pretty labor intensive at this point, so.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I guess from what I'm hearing, would you guys like to see the interactive side? Just kind of how that works?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so, um, again, this is simply put, just, um, the residents texting in with calmly asked questions. To the left-hand side. Um, you can see, sky's really the limit with what questions that you guys can put on the backend. We're, we're not going to constrict you guys to what you can and can't put, but, um, it's, it's super simple.
I can interrupt you. It's kind of tough to see on our, we've got a big screen, but it's still kind of tough to see. There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
It's going to give you a better view of what.
Yeah.
Some of that we have to supply in the creation of it, obviously, for frequently asked questions and all kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah. And with that, again, you guys can really put whatever you'd like. So I don't know if any of these are applicable to you, but, um, really it can be anywhere from agendas to voting questions, alcohol permits. Things like that. And really, the, the list goes on with what you can create on the backend. And it's super simple to actually create a response. So if you guys want to give me one moment, I'll, I'll show you how fast we can actually create it. Bear with me. Okay. All right. And, uh. So to create a response, all you do is press add now. Then you go to the, um, response box. Now, this is going to be the question, so you'll type it out. So we'll just do agenda. As an example, then you'd say something to the effect of. For. Township. For our latest agendas, please follow. The link below. Then from there, you just copy the URL link off the website. Paste it, add. Oh, let's see. I may have, yep, I created a duplicate, of course.
Were available for everybody to view or only the person who asked the question? Like, is that string of texts? Out there for everybody to view?
Did you hear that, John?
Yes. So just to make sure I'm understanding your question, are you talking about viewing from the backend or just texting in and receiving this response?
Think you have to ask the question to get the response. Is that what you're asking? Like, can you just go in and see?
Somebody else's texts. Prior text string communication that somebody else sent in, can I go?
The backside.
Which I see it from the backside. The front side, though. That would be the.
So if, if a resident, um, is looking for a text, um, I, I guess, um, just to make sure I'm understanding, are, are you asking, can residents see the text messages that come into the system? Just want to make sure I'm, I'm under.
From other residents.
Um, I, I understand if a FOIA records request is submitted from there, they would have access to that, but no, they couldn't just hop onto the backend and see that they wouldn't have the login, so. Really, only the, the, hopefully, does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to hurry and, um, recreate this, and then I'll have you guys text then, and I won't keep you too much longer. And, uh. Please follow the link. Okay. All right, then you just simply copy the link, paste it, then you'll add it. Now, what I'll have you do, um, if you want to text that same number, guys, just go and text agendas, and then, um, it's going to kick back the same response. And how it works is when the resident texts into the system, it reads that question from left to right, and it picks up on the keyword and trigger words. So. Let's say if, um, there's a commonly used, um, error, you guys could add that in the trigger box and say, for instance, if they typed in agenda, um, it'll still kick back that response.
I like it because I think there are a lot more people who use, uh, smartphones and they actually would, you know. Go online or, or for our website or, you know, even be on Facebook. Not everybody is communicating that way, but most people do have a cell phone.
Yeah, v- virtually everyone has a cell phone, right? Even, it's funny, but my own grandmother, she, she's eighty years old and she's, she still texts me to this day, so it's kind of. Sorry, I, I didn't hear that.
I was just agreeing.
Yeah. Cool. Well, yeah, tha- that kind of gives you an idea from the interactive side. I, I guess, lastly, we have our notifications and reporting issues. Is that something that you'd like me to touch on today, or should we save that for another day? I know we're, I'm kind of going over on my time limit.
Yeah, I think we'll spend the time, we'll save that for another day, uh, as I talk. This is a budgetary consideration for next year. And so I'm, I'm not looking to put you in some of that budgetary box yet, but when we start addressing our budgets, uh, we'll talk about these solutions. John, thanks for, for, uh, trying to.
Of course.
Getting, and getting up early there.
Yeah, you, you, I appreciate you guys for having me on. You guys have a great rest of your day. Bye.
Thank you, Dan.
Before we move on, just a quick question. What kind of cost we talking typically?
Well, uh, what, if we give it four thousand dollars. For the whole package, you know, there, um, and that would be repetitive, you know, in the coming years.
Four thousand a year?
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, uh. It, it's, I mean, when you look at applications as well, those are about four grand a year. So that seems to be kind of an industry standard, um, but, uh. I'm, I'm, I'm certain, I'm certainly not advocating for anything today. I just had a couple of discussions. We didn't want any more to. Take a peek at it and then also give it some time to ruminate with folks and, uh, maybe we could hear from, you know, public whether or not this is the way they want to be communicated with at that, so. Okay, uh, moving right along, we're on to, I promised Russ I came on early so he could, uh, he just had an appointment at eleven, so Marina update, Russ.
Great. Russ, you will turn on that light, or? Well, surprisingly enough, um, with the August weekend weather the way it was, um, we were actually up quite, quite significantly from last year. Um, sales-wise, um, see the numbers there, we're up dollar-wise forty-two percent, uh. Gallon, gallons-wise, thirty-seven. Year-to-date, we've caught back up after the slow May and June start. Uh, even with last year, year-to-date for gas sales. Um, apparel sales, we are discounting to clear out the inventory pad. For quite a while is working. We're down to about probably seventy pieces remaining. We've, uh, we've sold a lot of what was there. It's out of the building. We can start fresh next year. Um, overall revenues from the time, uh, the rain up opened. Uh, in May and through the end of August. We are actually up this year. I excluded the transient slip fees because there was different dates last year than it was this year. Uh, but tha- that's in the area of twelve thousand, and that's pretty constant from year to year, so. Um, but we are revenue-wise over last year also, so we're having a better year than I expected with the, the weather we've had. It's a good thing.
Started out that way.
It sure did, you know. Um, ongoing, uh, repairs and upgrades to our, um, our, our work barges and equipment for taking and dots and voice out. We're just about done with that. Uh, we'll start taking voice out as boats get off the hoist probably within the next week or two. We, you know, fifteen or twenty of them at a time, we will start. Start hauling them out of the water. I've got the dock crew scheduled for the weekend of October fifth and sixth. That gives us. Uh, it gives us plenty of time to get, uh, everything put away, locked up and closed up and, and water systems, uh, taken care of before the fifteenth of October. Um, and basically, that's about it. Just, uh, continuing to make improvements and repairs and, and, and upgrades to the Marina buildings and grounds and. Other than that, I think we're going on very well.
Hey, Lord Members, do you have any question for the audience? It looks like we're up seven point six-six percent this year. In the, uh, Marina opening through August thirty versus previous year. We touched on board number.
The, the good part, that's the great part. Bad part is the expense side. Is our payroll up seven percent? Our costs up seven percent? We'll get to that when you're done.
We'll, we'll be getting.
This part was good, so the other side.
Mostly the other side is, 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 yeah, is looking good as well, but. Um, I don't think we're doing too badly there either. Haven't looked at those yet, but it's, it's better, you know, it's, it's an end of the year. Uh, look.
Uh, I, I have a question. Uh, well, so you're going to post out on your website your schedule here or your anticipated preparation for the winter shutdown so public knows.
Yeah, yeah. This weekend, yes.
Okay, if you make a PDF or whatever, just ship it to me and I'll put it on to our website as well.
Yeah, I can, I can, okay.
Always.
Yeah.
Back at the.
I'll, I'll, I can do that, uh, over the weekend and get it to you from, I'm on there.
Okay, very good. Terry, any questions?
Oh, I'm good, thanks.
Very good. Raise your hand if there's any question. Okay, very good. Uh, we have somebody else that joined us, or, say, I can't read the names too good.
Colin. Colin.
Colin? Colin, are you out there?
Colin's not showing himself.
No.
Yeah, okay. Will you be muted on?
He's got himself muted. He's got himself muted.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to acknowledge Colin. Thanks for showing up. If you can hear me. Uh, okay, uh, thank you, Russ. Uh, I appreciate the Marina update. Uh, we obviously anticipate the end of the year as Larry had indicated. There's just, you know, the goal position there, so thank you. Very good. Number three on the agenda is, uh, Sherman Corral from the H O P O A. Uh, she is. Uh, the church, she's looking for the board approval that has to exist for a charitable gaming license for the nonprofit of the H O P O A by the one C four.
Thank you. Good morning. All right, thanks for having me. Uh, H O P O A has been awarded the opportunity to hold a raffle for a tower tour of the McAdams Bridge. A one person will win a ticket for two people to climb the, uh, north tower of the, uh, bridge and. And for us to be able to hold that raffle, we need a license for the, uh. Nishkan Gaming Charitable Division. So we need your signatures to be put on that form that they, I gave to. Brian Hill, um, week or so ago, so. If you could all sign that, we can get, moving on this, it's a four to six week turnaround for the government to give us the. ID number for the, uh, license, and so then it'll be selling rapper tickets for the climbing the tower next summer.
Is there a cost for us or maybe let's say?
No cost for you. We were paying the other cost.
Is this something that you can make done today or can this wait until Tuesday?
Today would be wonderful with the four to six week wait already.
We've done this before for you having.
Not for them. I mean, I apologize. We have done this before. We did this for, um, Core.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're quite a few hoops. One less to jump to.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have a board members comments there? And then do you wish to do this in work session or wait till Tuesday?
I don't have a problem with doing it now. If it, you know, I, if you're saying that what, we're more than it's, but we're just, it's gonna make a difference. I mean, I don't think everybody else feels.
I'm good with now too.
All right, very good. Sorry to stop down there.
I, I'm good with now too.
Okay, very good. Uh, I believe there, there was a motion, correct? Over here that you paid the choir.
Yes, but with that being said, I also want to make everybody aware that, um, Mary Jo on Zoom, that you won't be able to vote.
Right.
Okay. Just so everybody.
Okay, got it.
Okay, but we have to, to make that motion. Okay. Um, at a give you just a second. At a, a, a regular meeting of the Heritage Township Board called to order by Brian Hill Supervisor Hill on September fifth, twenty twenty-four at nine AM, the founding resolution was offered. Can I get you the move to make that motion? And can I get support?
No support.
I need to do my job or?
Oh, I know what you have it.
Just wanted to read it. It's all I wanted to do. But that's okay. All right. You've got a good job so far. Sure. I'll go for the question when you're ready.
Question about H O P O A. Ross County County. In the county of Ross County, asking if you recognize that the nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming licenses be considered for approval or disapproval? So a roll, a roll call vote.
Okay, you had the motion?
And then sponsored by trustee, or by treasurer, supported by trustee Newton.
Okay, any further discussion on that? No. All in favor? Roll call.
Supervisor Hill?
Yes.
trustee Newton?
Yes.
Clerk's fires? Yes. Treasurer Hoover.
Yes. Okay, very good. It appears like the motion has been approved. Uh, Charlene, uh, obviously clerk's part is we'll get you the paperwork.
Thank you.
You'll actually need to be able to submit. And mark the event.
Thank you.
And, uh, it's always nice to be able to get a fundraiser that is, that's pretty rewarding, actually.
I'll be ready to sell tickets. Okay.
Very good. Not in this speed. All right, very good. We are on to, uh, number four, which is fire EMS updates. Okay.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, so you showed the report in front of you. Um, just gonna hit the highlights for you. Um, we're pretty much on average for calls for the year and for the month, so, um, for the last five years, so we're doing pretty well there. Revenues are pretty steady, uh, ambulance revenues were, were up this last month, um, but that's because, you know, June and July are usually busy months, so our revenue coming in for those months is, is up a little bit. On the second page, um, going down through through the committees and meetings, um, Assistant Chief Rogers and myself, we met with the contractor of it, uh, Storage Towers of America, the new large storage building on the curves, underneath the township. And we, um, review the operations for the, the water tank, the supply tank that's there and around twenty-five thousand gallons of water for us to be able to draw water from if we have a fire. Um, for their facility plus any other, other, other area up there. Um, so we went through that operation with them. We went inside the building, looked at their plumbing and switches and valves and all that stuff. So we have yet to draw water out of that. We're gonna try to do that over this next week and make sure it's all, it's all working, but it looks like we're in pretty good shape there for having twenty-five thousand gallons on the north end of the township. So that's, that's very helpful. That also helps us. And we'll talk a little bit later about our ISO rating and insurance service rating that'll help us with that as well. Um, further down, I'm just talking activities, um, Assistant Chief William, um, went through the, uh, Michigan State EMS inspection for our EMS license for our ambulances and our service and our individuals. And, uh, we passed the fine colors, no problem there. We already have our license for the next year, um, so we're, we're in good shape there. She does a really good job keeping the documentation up and and we do a really good job of maintaining our equipment and our, our supplies. So we have, we have never had a real problem passing that inspection. Assistant Chief Rogers, um, was organizing the insurance service, um, organization inspection. That comes up every few years. So I think it's been seven years since our last one. Our current rating is six for most of the township, um, so it's pretty, a pretty good rating. Um, as I mentioned, the water tank on the, on the north end of the township is gonna help us. Plus, our staffing levels have changed in the last, uh, seven years. We have more readily available staff on. So our, our times respond from the time of our tone for, to getting to the scene is greatly improved. And that's gonna, we believe that's gonna help us. We're hoping we can drop that number to five. Certainly want to keep our six, but if we can drop it to a five, that's what we're hoping to do. So we won't know the outcome of that, you know, for a while yet. So probably next month, hopefully I can report back on it. Um, ambulance two thirty-two has been kind of a continual problem for us. I don't want to really say it's a lemon, but it's approaching that. Um, we've had continual problems. All eight cylinders have had to have spark plugs and wires replaced since, since we purchased that truck this last time. Um, I remember which cylinder it was, but, um, cylinder went bad. It was, it was misfiring. So we took it in. We, um, normally would have to take it down to Mount Pleasant to have it done under warranty work. Um, and it's, and the warranty is expiring on it. So we had the last three cylinders done by, I must count a lot of recyclers. It was about two hundred and fifty dollars to have that done. But if I were to take it down to Mount Pleasant to have that done, it would have cost that much in gas and personnel time to, to do that. So we just did all three at once. Board would not do more than one cylinder at a time. If you had one cylinder bad, they would only fix one cylinder. So even though they know there's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's also having issues with the tires. Um, we believe that the truck, when it was manufactured, with the box under that may be way to do properly. So we're going to have have the, uh, the truck weighed by the Michigan State Police, um, Waymaster. And individual tires have a weight by tire. We believe the front end is heavy. And it's causing cupping on the front tires and it's probably, it's gonna be a pretty rough ride. Uh, we, we're kind of going through tires on that pretty quick because of that. Um, so we want to try to figure out what's going on and get that fixed. We've had it with after alignments and suspension and all that. Um, but we're gonna, we're gonna check the weight and then we're gonna probably end up going back on the manufacturer, which is ED plus. Um, and work with them to see if we can get someone who's corrected through them instead of us paying for it all. So that's a project for us. Um, we started, uh, working with the schools at the core technical education program at the last time at middle school, when school started, um, core technical program started as well. We worked with the public safety program along with the sheriff's department. And through the first semester of school, we're, we're working about two days a week in school. Um, going through public safety, education, students, uh, careers in public safety. So fire EMS on, on our end. Um, Assistant Chief Rogers coordinates that as well. And, uh, we've got a number of instructors on our department that work in there and we get, our instructors get reimbursed by four when they're in the schools doing that work. On the back page, um, we can go back to the seventy-fifth anniversary. I know we briefly talked about it last month, but, um, it actually happened in August and it was August third and we, we felt it was a really, really nice event. Um, it's hard to know how many people really attended because, you know, we didn't have a one entrance where we could count everybody. We're thinking two hundred and fifty to three hundred people attended, um, all good comments. Um, people seemed to enjoy it. It was a, a real positive event and a real nice day. Um, so I, I appreciate everybody that came out and everybody that helped put it on. It was, it was really nice. Um, awesome. In August, the, um, August sixth ballot proposal sailed in the village and we talked about that briefly. My plan is over the next, uh, few months, I'll get the building committee back together. We'll talk about, you know, where we go from here, what our options are. We really don't have a plan at this point until we get that group together. And we'll include one or two folks from the township board as well, plus the, that committee already has some citizens on it and other folks in the community. So we'll, we'll look at that and see what options are and bring that back in forward for discussion. And then upcoming events, um, September twenty-third, we'll be having hose and ladder testing. Um, what that means for you guys is that we'll be stretching hoses from the far end of our building, almost over to the police department parking lot. And it's on a Monday because they don't do testing on weekends. Cause we have a company coming to do this testing. It's required, recorded testing. So we have, finally, we have about five thousand feet of hose. So we're going to, um, pick up, take several hours to do that testing. So we'll work around parking issues and walk-in issues um, that day and make sure that it's safe and as convenient as possible for people in the building. But we can't, we can't do this testing out of the grass. We have to do it on a clean, flat, smooth surface. So um, then Fireman's Memorial Festival is this month and Fire Prevention Week is next, next month. So we'll be busy at bulk of those events.
Okay, very good. Board members, any question? All right. And we've got very many are seeing, uh, everybody in the audience. So all right, thank you, Jake. Appreciate your report. Appreciate your good work and your efforts. Number five, Police Department Highlights, Chief Shinsky.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, just gonna start off with number three there. Give you a quick update on that. Sort of talked about it in a while, um, but, uh, had a virtual meeting with the rep from, uh, Caliber Public Safety, along with engineer from Caliber and a rep from, uh, MSP Lean, uh, for the Lean integration piece into our RMS system. Uh, it was discussed that we would have to do, what we'd have to do on our end with Lean to move forward with the project. And then the engineer and the, uh, MSP rep also discussed what needed to be done on their end for the connectivity of that project. Um, and I'm also currently working with the rep from Caliber and getting a, a demo, either virtually or in person to see exactly how it would operate. Um, um, once it's done. Um, and then just a reminder that it was discussed that we would be a launching point for this implementation into a pilot testing program. Because, uh, our, uh, Caliber apparently doesn't have it. Um, number five there, uh, follow-up on Officer Cherski. I have spoken with him. He has advised me that he has finished his chemotherapy treatments. Has met with the surgeon. Um, he advised that it appears the treatment plan has worked with the recent MRI. It only shows scar tissue, which means the, his cancer has gone. Uh, his surgeon wants to do another scope and MRI in October. And he's, uh, hoping to be able to return after that if everything still looks good. Um, I, I think he's excited to get back to work and, uh, we're definitely excited to have him back and really glad that it's helped and he's doing well after all that, that he's come through.
Let me jump down. Jake, before we move on, I want everybody to understand, uh, the, the chief of history is a very force right and, and, uh, does not mind, um, the chief giving updates like this about health condition or otherwise. It's with his permission, but thanks, good share. Right. He's, he's been very open and, and like you said, has given us permission to discuss it in public. Thank you.
Come down to number seven there, uh, the follow-up to the last one's request from a citizen who wanted the two twenty-five million hours to give him a science to replace Henry's forest. I contacted that person, uh, over the phone and advised her of the board's decision of not moving forward with having the signs put up. Uh, the citizen was understanding and seemed to be pleased with, with the extra controls from the police department at this time. And, you know, we told her that we continue those controls for and, uh, she seemed to be, uh, happy with that. Uh, number eleven, just updating on, uh, notification I received from MCOS, which is the Michigan Commission on Law and Portion Standards. Um, they received the funding for the MCOS Public Safety Academy Assistant Program. The amount of ten million dollars. The first go around was thirty million dollars. So it's, uh, quite a bit shorter than the, the first time. And then, uh, instead of the twenty-four thousand dollars per recruit, they've only authorized twenty thousand dollars per recruit. And, uh, that's four thousand dollars less. Uh, but they're not expecting to be able to, uh, have access to these funds until November of twenty twenty-four at the earliest. Um, and what that program is, is if a department wants to sponsor, uh, cadet into the police academy, they can apply for that grant and use it for that, uh, purpose. Um, number twelve there. Uh, question, is there anybody in the wings interested yet in this police program, you know, the wings? Yeah, anybody out there that?
You're looking at to put into the program?
Oh, not, not currently. We don't. Okay. I just wanted to get somebody that was looking to get into it. Oh, and at, at this time, we don't have anybody. No, okay. Uh, number twelve there, uh, myself and Administrator clerk Julie Hill met with, uh, Tricia Myers, who was a social worker with the US Department of Veterans Affairs to discuss adding a link for veteran resources awareness on our police app and website. Um, we're able to do that and I believe it's a, a really good resource for veterans and our community to, to look at that. Um, so if you get a chance, um, go out there and, and check it out. It's a really good resource that I think a lot of people don't know about. And, uh, we're also able to use it out in the field if, uh, we come in contact with a veteran that is in need that might not have the resources or, or know where to go and get those resources. This is a great resource for that. So that was very beneficial. Uh, just a quick update on our landscaping project, uh, contacting Higgins Lake Landscaping. And they advised me they're looking to be over at the department in September. Of course, they're like everybody else, short-staffed and, you know, pretty behind and trying to catch up. Um, number twenty-one there, um, looking for this to be put on the board meeting for next Tuesday. It's, uh, the follow-up from the Fourth of July. I've been in contact with, uh, several local businesses in reference to the letter of support for the expansion of the South State Parks infrastructure. The parking and, uh, have begun, begun to receive, uh, some letters back from some businesses. I just recently followed up with some and reminded them of giving me that letter. Um, but at this time, I'd like to ask the board if they're willing to author a letter of support for that meeting that I have with, uh, the park on September thirtieth at, at ten AM down at the South State Park. Like you said, just looking for a spot on the agenda for approval of that. Um, on August, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, uh, marked the first day of school, um, sorry to interrupt, but, but granted, as I turned rings over to Officer Ellis, who is, uh, our new SRO, uh, since beginning of school year, he's, uh, been, uh, very, uh, welcomed and, uh, he's seen me put a great job. I followed up with all the, uh, staff and administrators at school and they're, uh, very pleased with him so far. So I think he'll do a great job in there. Um, number twenty-seven, uh, this quick update, the, the citizens that myself and Supervisor Hill provided the tour of the NMPAC center have, uh, graciously donated a hundred thousand dollars to the center to assist with the, uh, future expansion project that would be put, that will put the center on a road to a family trauma center. Most to heal the whole family as well. It's a basically a one-stop shop. And additionally, they're going to donate twenty-five dollar, twenty-five. And additionally, they're going to donate twenty-five dollar, twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the next four years after that. Um, just wanted to kind of recognize them and. Now, that's a great donation for the community and we have some great uh, citizen doctors. Uh, thirty-two there, uh, we're beginning the very busy planning and ongoing delivery of a few more of our community programs in the months ahead. Uh, the trunk or treat twenty twenty-four organization meeting occurred. We're decided again to have the uh, trunk or treat event again here. Um, plans are moving forward for seeing to be held at the Garestownship Municipal Center built behind the hall. Uh, as always in the past, it'll be on the traditional uh, October thirty-first. Uh, Halloween Day. And also just kind of looking for the approvals aboard to post that here again here. Uh, another community event we have coming up next Tuesday. Uh, another community event we have coming up next Tuesday, uh, September tenth is the. Plan of Hope Port Run that we do every year. Uh, last day registration will be done at five PM at the Garestownship Police Department, which will run beginning at six PM. Currently, we have raised five hundred dollars and have eighteen people pre-registered. Uh, the registration fee is thirty dollars and comes with a run shirt. Uh, even if you can't run, you can still come out and donate thirty dollars and get a shirt to add to your, to add to our totals. Um, and also as a reminder, you can ride a bike if you would like. And then uh, you can also um, bring your doggo and they can run along with you. So, the more the merrier. And then uh, the last event we have is the Agnow. Fall Road Cleanup, which is scheduled right now for Wednesday, September eighteenth at four PM. And for all of you that don't know, we cover uh, both sides of the road from Pioneer Hill to Hillsdale Drive on County Road one hundred. And uh, anybody can participate. We have a sign up sheet over at the police department. So if you wanna come up and help clean up, you're more than welcome. After, we'll have pizza and beverages for uh, everybody that helps. That's all I have. Any questions?
If there's any questions. I do have a comment. Have you also asked the uh, sheriff's office to be a signer with you on this request or get the structure out there? That you're looking for parking on. It has a good and a bad side to it, obviously. And I don't think, you know, I'm not sure we're ever gonna get them to do anything, but um, at least we have to try. Uh, and then, you know, make sure that you have enough there at your September thirtieth meeting, because I know you're asking for a letter of support. For what? For the general public, what that means is he's looking for a letter of support. To ask them to create an infrastructure for all of the parking they dump on County Road one hundred, Kansas Street and everywhere else. This follows up a year of temporary no parking signs um, on the sides of the road, which. Probably didn't detour a lot, but it just parking south end, or excuse me, that's south, yeah, south end of ours. Uh, at that point, so. And we talked with the sheriff and other sheriffs if they'd be willing to offer something.
Yeah, I talked to him. I said, follow with him.
Okay, very good. Any questions for on that same uh, token with of state police? But same, along with the sheriff, what about talking to the state police?
Uh, you could ask, but I'm not sure they'll. They'll do that probably as political, because it's a state agency that you're looking to ask to do something, but it doesn't hurt to ask. That obviously will come out of the district, I'm sure somewhere, or something like that, but.
Very good. Thank you. Again, the road cleanup, uh, September eighteenth, if anybody that wants to come, you're available, you're you're available. More the merrier and it also makes it a lot quicker on that huge stretch of road. So, thank you, Jim.
Alright, thanks.
Uh, Jim?
Um, I think Jagger has new hires for the party department. Did you want to speak to that or are you just good on that?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the intent.
Yes.
Do you wanna come on up for a question? That that was the intent to give us what the heads up for, I'm sure.
It's for, it's for next Tuesday. Um, so we have two folks that are interested in joining the department. One of them came from the Seventy-Fifth anniversary celebration. They moved to this area a few months ago, uh, live up here in Baker Village. Uh, he was a paid-on-call firefighter downstate as um, compared to training and some experience and. He left the department down there and then he moved up here and he was debating whether he wanted to get involved in the department and ask him, you know, for the seventy-fifth, he started talking to us and. So we've we've interviewed him, done his background, um, using the process this morning, his uh. Drug testing, physical damage. Uh, so it sounds like uh, he's gonna be a really good addition to the department. He works for the railroad downstate. So he's not in the area during the day, during the week, but often he'll be here on weekends at night, maybe as well. Uh, the other, the other one is a a young man, is uh, from the area here. He's currently on market fire department, paid on call. But he lives um, with his dad up in the um, in. Pugs of Village here, so he's interested in joining our department as well. Uh, he just recently received his firefighter one training and certification. I mean, might be going to EMT school. We're not sure yet where he's gonna go with that, but we've interviewed him and done his background. And he's also getting his drug test and uh, and physical, uh, down here directly as well. So I think they'll both be uh, good additions to the department as paid on call, um, so they can respond when they're available in the area. They're they're, they're both um, both not on fire right now, but uh, on the fire side of things. But the one is looking at possibly doing the mess as well.
Hey, thank you. And you're looking for approval. Got more than action, I would.
Yep.
All right, very well. Thank you. Jim, my law, look. Morning.
Gula has a wrote two notes for you to have. Uh, we've been working, continuing to work primarily on the funding area. Because that's uh, we need to have financing and pick that into place. And be able to proceed. We need cash coming in. We do have some cash in hand or. We've signed the M D A R grant, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant. Uh, and basically that allows us to continue on with the hydro geo work. They'll be putting together this final report and submitting that to Eagle for uh, discharge, but then it wastes a lot of credit sites. That's where that is money is focused. Uh, the forty thousand dollar. Eagle grant from Water Reza is not points or sets mainly for, will be for administration. It's gonna be for. Uh, some grant writing and then also for uh, some assistance legally as into uh. Setting up of of funding, you know, how do we borrow money, where to do. And you know, what kind of bonds do, you know, if we do, what's the pros and cons of. Revenue bonds, municipal bonds, go into the county, clean water and. Water Act and USD, so it'll give us also a good evaluation as to what options are out there. And what the best source, and then the third one there is the million dollar EPA grant. And that was specifically, uh, you know, it's designated for primarily project development, some community outreach. And gathering uh, background information and primarily the significant portion of the mapping. For the top graphic mapping of the whole target area. We continue to talk about fresh cultures as we move forward and how we've been even the building of the project in the future. A couple of other side notes, we have had employer requests with a lot of information as to. The value of our expenditures. And so we'll be putting that together. Will we hope to continue our mission and charge of working to us. For the ways of our. Options and.
Very good. More, do you feel, excuse me? More, do you have any questions of Jim? Okay, they're good. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate the update this morning. Parks and Parks number seven, Susan. I'm assuming you're going to do it?
Sweet, I'm going to do it?
I'm assuming, I heard, I don't know.
I'm going to pass out something. Here, Joe, I will follow up with you on these couple of extra pieces that I'm passing out, but I have already, um. Even you guys, this top page, there's one new line on. Uh, okay. Um, so this is a written report I submitted a few days ago, just updating you on a couple of projects that are. Uh, in process, so the uh. Township Park Improvement Project, we had a. A bit of a delay in finishing our contracting, so instead of starting construction this week, we're going to be starting construction next week. So I'm waiting for one additional piece of paperwork to be included in the contracts and then. The prime professional is gonna drive here on Friday with that packet in the last piece of paper, which is a notice to proceed. That I need somebody from this board, usually the clerk or the supervisor to put a signature on. Then that will be the end of the contracting. And um, the timeline on that would begin work next week, not the week of the third, but the week of the ninth, I guess. Um, the first thing we'll do is prepare the space for the play equipment. Down a few trees, prepare that space and build the play structure. Uh, then start the bathroom demo and then finish with the last play piece of equipment that would be at the end of October. Any questions on that?
We say a demo, you mean a model?
Not demolishing anything, you're right. We are, we are demolishing the floor. We're just gonna put new cement on, so we'll take the cement out, but the walls. And the ceiling, they stay the same, so that wasn't a good word.
Okay.
Renovation, yeah, thank you. At the municipal park here, just confirming the security camera is ordered. And I'm waiting to uh, confirm with our security when that is finished with them and then when they will schedule the installation here. Um, and I I know that I would like to have access to the real-time camera video, which is available via an an app. And I'd like to work with the board as appropriate in honor to um, get set up to do that. So I know physically it's applicable, but I don't know exactly which steps to do and what authorization that I need, so I will work with you offline on that. The uh, Garestownship Five Year Rec Plan, the survey has been available for most of August. I plan to cut off the survey on Monday. We have about a hundred and seven complete surveys to date. A little disappointing. I was hoping to get more, but we made considerable outreach. As you guys know, we put two notices in the paper. One was a public notice, one was a legitimate ad. Uh, that's been posted multiple times on Higgins Lake Facebook pages. It's of course posted on this Gare's website. We put flyers around, we did it, we did it. We made personal appeals to people by text and email asking them and I put up two notifications on the Team Reach app. So. You know, we got what we got. And um, it's acceptable, the the parks um, consultant we're working with at NMCU uh, is not. You know, bothered by saying that it's too low to consider and they will be sufficient to to get us some information and guidance. Regarding that point, five-year rec plan, the second page of what I gave you is. A plan for interim steps and timing to complete that process. So I I just wanna point out that once we cut off the data, we'll analyze that data, we'll input it. Into a goals and objectives section of the five-year plan and. If toward the bottom of this list, I'd like to post a draft of the rec plan on the Gare's website in early November. So that by early December, we can hold a meeting perhaps in in your standard December board meeting. We can have a little adjunct that says any public comments. If there's not none, we can, or even if there are, we can take, we can still pass a motion to accept the rec plan. And then um, I need actually as part of this process, I need a motion and I need the minutes from the meeting where you pass the motion. As part of the things I need to upload, so that uh, by the end of the year, we can have that wrapped up and then I post it in January.
There's a question on that. Question on that, um. It was, so are you sure that it just is at a regular meeting and we do not, we need to pull it? There was not a public hearing you're asking for in the summer?
It's it's not really a public hearing, but you have to. Um, put Parks and Recs review of rec plan on the agenda.
Okay.
And make it available for people to give comments at that meeting.
Very nice. Okay, very good. So being individual, uh, we will list it out.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
Uh, back to the front, um, the memory bench program, just giving you a summary for this year, twenty twenty-four. This is the second year of the program. We placed two orders this year, one in June and one in August. And netted a total of eight benches and one picnic table this year. Plus that one bench uh, hook squares that we bought for the Lion Township Townline Park. So um, I think it's great. I think it's um, enough product each time as we're going and. There might be a time where we're maxed out at benches, but um, I would recommend probably leaving this. Program open one more year. Like I said, I would plan to order again next spring and um. We'll see how it goes. Any comments or thoughts from you guys on that program?
No, you guys are doing a great job.
Uh, my last bullet here that um. Chief Hell asked me a few weeks ago if the committee could consider thinking through a process for. Reserving parks facilities. Uh, it hasn't come up very often, but it came up once recently and the Garestownship does not really have an articulated process if somebody wants to reserve. Any of our parks facilities, reserve a pavilion and any of the three parks, reserve the courts, reserve uh, the. The volleyball pit or something like that for a private park. So um, we did talk about it. It's something that we'll consider in the upcoming months and we'll get back to the board with recommendation in the spring.
Right, yeah, my my only comment was is obviously the more you improve these parks, the more desirable they need. They have events. And uh, and so uh, just I I I'm not, I don't know where I fall in it, but I just asked a question. And think it's appropriate for the committee to debate that issue. Uh, at your meetings to figure out how do we handle that in the future. Right now, for the audience, it's first come, first served. Um, which, you know, might lead to some unfortunate circumstances of a couple of people trying to use it at once. I do know that Gare's park has been used before weddings uh, in the fall, just uh, on the round, if you will. They're a public park, so it deserves a discussion, I think.
The last page that I attached this packet is a copy of the meeting minutes from our last meeting on August twenty-eighth. I just wanted to share it with you because it occurred to me that I don't see see the board on these meeting minutes. I just send it back around to the committee. Um, but if you would like to be included on these meeting minutes, I will be there for it, so. Yeah, so this is. I'm not today.
Yeah, there's one question. I know we talked about uh, the size of your committees.
The size.
Yes, has that been any further? I I have a note on that.
It's it's right now, we were at nine, one person left and now we're at eight.
I have a note on that. Uh, research back to two thousand sixteen in the original, or that board at that time authorized seven members to that board. However, it would be nine, I don't know. Uh, the committee is articulated out that the committee consists of the township supervisor uh, in six numbers. Meetings will be monthly in the evenings. Garestownship previously undertaken a planning process that it all basically had to do with the first five-year rec plan. Uh, that was necessary to get everybody organized, specifically states that uh. There's no compensation to the membership, just a sense of pride and accomplishment. The girls of Garestownship Parks and Art creation, so. Um, that is what's before us. Currently, we have eight apparently uh, on the. Um, that is what's before us, currently we have eight apparently uh on the committee, and I know we have had eight type meetings as well. But I think in the, in the future, um, I, I know that we will attrit out by one, for sure by then, um, I think Larry you said on it. Right, um, and so the board technically has two people on it, which was apparently Mary Jo and Larry, so there will be one attrit off that anyways, um, I personally myself, I don't you know, I don't think it ought to just be the township supervisor, it should be a board member or otherwise, so. From the board, we're gonna need to do some work on this, come back, uh get this in order and, and properly amend it uh at a future board meeting, um. And to be quite honest with you, I think we'll wait until uh December, because we are going to have new board members, um and I'm I'm really not into lengthened up politics and uh doing, changing things that another board may very well want to change again. So we're kind of in a, kind of a state of flux here right now, so. I will keep this on my radar, Susan, for that, um, I, you know, and we'll get this thing changed just as soon as we can. Does that feel enough, board?
Yeah.
Kind of move forward, Mary Jo, you good?
Right, thanks for finding that, I did not know that.
Yeah, okay, thank you much, appreciate it Susan. Anybody in the audience have any question uh about our Parks and Recs? Obviously Susan has supercharged, uh shall I say, the, the group and has an incredible talent that we're lucky enough to have. We get out there and look for those other ladies, um and moving forward, and we appreciate your work, Susan. And uh I, I enjoy continuing to working with you, um, I won't necessarily sort of immediately abandon the committee to do that, I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, we're on time, cemetery update, Carrie. Um, we received our order a week ago and uh I talked briefly to Tony, he said it's quite a machine, he's happy with it, so I'm glad that's working out. Also, the lights on the chapel were issued, uh and Pioneer Electric has been out, but they haven't completed their way through some parts. And then the last thing is, uh in your box, I put this powder steel um headstone. And it's from local here at St. Allen, uh Roscommon Monument. Um, and it's just gonna sit flat on the ground and you can see it sixteen by ten by two inches uh for a hundred and fifty dollars, and I just wanted to run it by you, make sure it's okay before we go ahead say it's okay with the, the monument company.
Now, what's the purpose of this?
Just to designate where the powder field is at the cemetery.
So how big is that hardly cemetery, I mean, there are a lot of people there, much activity?
No, but nobody there yet, but we have one in the wings ready to go. It's one, one big section, there's sixteen sites available.
I'm gonna ask a question that I already
I saw one.
Bentall.
Right.
But my first um reaction was you're right, it's not a lot of money, but um because of the purpose of it's for is this something that did we ask them if they would want to donate this to the cemetery because of what the purpose is, I'm just asking if it was asked.
No, I didn't ask for donation, they just said this is their cost.
Yeah.
And I didn't pursue it any, any further.
Okay.
I can.
I just personally, I, I, we all have different opinions, but I, I think it's always worth a ask.
Okay.
Um, especially for a uh situation like this, if they all want to, that's fine. But you know, if they do, then.
Is this common for cemeteries to have a designated place like this?
Yes.
And with signage to indicate existence of it, is this?
Yeah.
As far as I'm aware of, yes, I've been in hundreds and hundreds of cemeteries and yes, she answered that.
That's what they're called. Either way.
Indigenous, for those who don't know indigenous heritage.
We should have it, I think it's very nice, I don't think a hundred and fifty dollars is too much to spend. Again, I would just, I would ask, it's always worth a ask.
I'll, I'll go back there and ask them, do, do you want, yeah, I'm gonna delay it a whole lot of.
No, we're not gonna delay it, we can report with it, I'm just saying that
It certainly is not of the.
The situation.
Yes.
To me, it's always worth a ask because, because of what it's for.
Which, it's not of the amount of money in which, I mean, it's in the, in the budget. And uh so can Carrie um move forward, uh we don't have to give him any authorization, he's just bringing it informationally and FYI, basically. Okay, very good, anybody else have any kind of, like a powder field? Okay, I'm not seeing any, thank you Carrie uh for the update, uh uh we uh long awaited, um well and, and Simon uh has, has uh, we definitely have water here. Uh and I'm meeting with the uh, with the something which should be in the district health department at one thirty today for the site visit, uh for the inspection and then they'll do a test, we are in the process of uh putting together a test for nitrate bacteria and heavy metals as well, so we're baseline for our brand new well. Um, and as I suspected, uh when we turned on the well, um it, it obviously pushed with proper pressure and everything else, it pushed a whole bunch of crud into the hot water heater which probably blew the hot water heater, which probably started leaking. And when we looked at the hot water heater, it was a forty-gallon residential that was put in there, there's no space for uh anything really larger without compromising our furnace and fillers and being able to fix those, so um I met with uh Chief Fisher uh cause he has a fifty percent stake in it financially in the building. Uh, whether, I'm not happy about it, I'm sure, but uh and, and Tony I, our biggest person and um we're uh and the, and plumbing company in- indicated that probably a nucleus solution would be the best. And uh to move forward, which is uh the ability to, to obviously respect the, the space in there and also the type of usage that we do here, so. We are, we're in the process of doing that, uh the plumbing company did bring in a substitute, shall we say, residential hot water heater, forty gallon uh just to get us hot water that you might experience if you ran hot water today, so the saga continues with it, um and hopefully we just don't keep pushing things all the way down the line, this is some of that okay building pieces uh that we, that we talk about all the time, so. That's my update for everybody. Uh, number ten, grad sale amendment, Carrie.
Okay, we talked about this at the August meeting, about changing on section three from having um grad sales two times a year or three times a year. And after talking to our attorney, uh it's, it's kind of a board decision, uh whether we have to make a a proposal or just make an amendment and publicize it, I'm not sure of the, the proper format, but that's, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay, so you're looking uh uh language, uh to approve a language change.
Yes, and I don't know if it's a resolution that we have to organize or we can just.
As, yeah, it's just a, it's a, it's an option to amend that, that particular ordinance and it is, then it's gotta be posted for thirty days in the paper before it can take effect, it's not an immediate effect piece, so.
That's fine.
Uh, anyway, no, we're genuine in that document or refers to uh two or, or the three, if you will, where there wasn't two and the permit. And when there says on that, we have to be checking with the wire. So in the language, for approval, we would have to also approve the change in the permit as well.
Okay. I have a copy, you're good.
Uh, very good, very good. Uh, you wanted to do this Tuesday or do you want another month of putting together language pieces, or what would you like to do?
I just assumed it, but there's no rush because of, well I, I just assume you had it done the next week if we can.
Okay, you want to, you want to do that Tuesday? Um, okay, we'll take a look at it, see if we can hit it on, is it, is it all possible?
Yeah, if you can, that's fine.
Uh, that normally leaves, but Friday and Monday you look on that language piece, uh and I'm not sure how the board is it is, so.
Okay, it, like I said, it's not a day, if not, we can wait till.
If not, we can go until October's meeting.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, uh Carrie, for that, that update on Brad, so.
Thank you.
Number eleven, moving right along, time is ten fifteen. Uh, if you want to take a quick break, okay, ten fifteen, we're going to take a quick recess and we'll come back after five minutes, you guys can go ahead and I want you to finish up.
Bye. Thank you, Doc.
Okay, we're back in the uh session, time is twenty-two. Um, we're on to uh number twelve and
Nope, not on that.
Shoot, or what, cyber insurance, uh we, I just wanted to update the board that we did get it executed as you had all asked with a proper operation and uh in, in uh premium, and so we're all good to go on that.
So this is gonna work, catch work with the first title?
You know, let it go, right, correct. Okay, any questions on that one?
No, sorry.
All right, very good, on to number twelve, the Garrish Township compost site and science and permit, um well, with Eagle under the materials management uh division. So we, I, I know I've talked a couple months now, they, they, they looked us over, they measured us up, uh they said that we had to apply for the grant. So we started to apply for the permit, when the information came in, I got a contact from Eagle who says you know, how would you need this permit or not, and we were meeting with his managers and I think quite frankly with you, they're trying to, you know, to figure out and wrestle with this twenty, this fall of twenty twenty-three law that came into effect under materials management, um which all dark tails into the county who is uh applied for the grant, they still not gotten it yet, it was sixty thousand dollars planning, uh basically planning that uh that has to occur and then uh say what all of us, a lot of townships are going to do uh in the county to comply with the twenty twenty-three uh act, so. He told me to wait, talked to him a few days later, he says well, you can probably avoid it if you, it's all about the storage of those leaves and composting on site. He said you could probably avoid it by having maybe recontacting your TDE vendor that takes it out in one fell swoop at the end of the year at about a cost currently of about twenty-eight thousand dollars a year roughly, uh if you could have them come in three hundred times a year uh as well, then you could avoid having to have the permit. And the problem is, is when you thought about them coming up uh three other times during the year, it becomes cost prohibitive. Um, essentially we pay a whole lot more money uh because there's time, distance, travel, labor, all the rest of that, so. That being said, because we, um because that would be cost prohibitive, uh then they said, well, then you're gonna be required to have that permit, well, the permit fee is seven hundred and fifty dollars, it spans a period of five years. Much more obviously cost effective, so um it, it, I worked with uh Jim Osley, who is the uh fellow that manages our, in his company, that manages the compost site daily in a neat, orderly manner. Um, and uh submitted the permit appropriately, and the reason why I'm talking to the board about it today is this um I think because this is an initial, and once again, a new unexpected expenditure of seven fifty um I, I would like the board's uh authorization on Tuesday to authorize the clerk to arrange the ACH payment because it is only accepted online. Um, and so we'll be looking for a motion to authorize the clerk to uh recreate that or the treasurer to make it, the money available uh as well uh to get that set, I did, it doesn't appear like we've been a I haven't gotten any denials and it looks that there supposedly would be a rather quick thing to get back to you and they haven't, so. Uh, that being said, that's what's, what's on that for uh for the work session today. Any, any board member have any questions at all?
No.
Right, good. Moving to number thirteen, um that is the, and, and it's entitled Martell uh contract employee agreement. Mary Jo, you were the one that uh apparently contacted or reached out to Martell. Uh, why don't you give the crowd the history here uh of what that is and um and, and then I'll open it up to board and audience members as well, anybody that wants to speak to the to the process.
Um, yeah, well, uh Keith Martell um does feel that it's crucial to the the property there uh to, to have some uh select cutting, some dead trees down and you know, prevent any problems. He understands because the township um fire department didn't go through this time you know, that, of including that. Um, he's kind of actually waiting to see what we want to do, but he's very workable. You know, he, I don't know if that answers, I mean, is that enough?
Uh, yeah, I'm, this, we'll continue to frame it like this. Um, I, I, again, I have to always go back into the work, I used to take a look and see where, where, where those before me have been. I report at the time, we don't have to do that. Um, but I uh for the audience, I, the file records, obviously we've been using Keith Martell, I know that we paid you nine hundred dollars back in twenty uh sixteen, I believe it was, on the particular contract. And so what we're talking about is the land that's kind of behind us uh back here, um and uh forest, forest management planned essentially, there's a lot of dead stuff in there. Uh, and of course, obviously, um it's somebody contacted him from the township. Um, and I'm not even sure if it was within Parks and Recs or maybe it might have been, but anyway, the idea came to, to look at a forest management plan. And so Martell is a company that actually does basically consult, looks, marks and also handles um the, the bit uh pieces and gets some money out to, you know, people for bid on. And so the, I came into this on April one, um and, and shortly thereafter, uh Keith uh Martell, myself, Chief Fisher and Mary Jo met with him, um and the, the, the wisdom at that time, um obviously said it wasn't a good time to cut. Uh, there was potential of a fire hall, if you will, if it went through, which would make it a larger parcel property, which would be apparently more lucrative or, or likely to get better or get spitters because it's a bigger cut, this is a huge cut. So also with my research on it, um when Mary Jo uh brought this up I found that we have a contract with Martell that's, that was started in twenty twenty-two, signed by our previous supervisor, um but it's an open-ended contract, so I'm not sure I really understand it. Um, I, I know I'm not a big fan of open-ended contracts, and so in, in the beginning, I, I'd like to see the end, so I'll give you my opinion right now, I don't see the urgency to cut this. Uh, at this point, I don't know, because our fire fighting group is not uh met to find out whether our fire station is a, included in that issue or a remodeled issue or whatever it might be. My understanding from the April meeting was the plan was to, to basically put a road in or a, a way to get in for the logging off of county road one hundred and then go back, cut, have a section back there that they had the, the, the cut and whatever back in there. I really don't like political timing of it because I'm sure we can think, people think we're gonna blow it, our department in there, and we've had no such discussions to do that, so that's a political side of it. The other piece is, is I would like to see us address the open-ended contract with something that, in the contract at the time of the, we're really ready to cut. So, there's two whole issues, what's that?
The compost piece, Joe.
The other piece to that uh is with the materials management thing going on right now, I have no idea what's gonna come out of that, other than I've had discussions with the county controller um and what the plan might look like, and she feels it will have a, it is likely to have a high content of potential sharing of resources. Garrish Township and Benton Township, we have two of the, what I call organized uh compost sites and larger sites. I in, I do envision, and I asked her if I was probably short-sighted or wrong if that meant that we may be under this materials management plan and under the public act, have to entertain taking other people's composts. And of course, she thought that she envisioned that as well. I don't, we're currently one point two-five acres on our compost site, and I don't know whether we would have to be, whether we have to open more up. Um, and there's, there's no. And there's, there's no uh crystal ball to look into right now. I would, I'm hoping nobody will put any barriers to. The receiving township for some of this stuff getting properly reimbursed by other townships that may not have facilities. So for me, I, you know, I, I think it's kind of, it all, it always has to try and pay for itself. It's not doing that right now. It's a twenty-eight thousand out there. And I think when we do look at this materials management and we look at this stuff, it has to be constitutional for parish township and uh and a benefit, basically. So. I don't know whether we're gonna need another one point two-five acres, one acre, I don't know what this is going to bring. So for me, at the present time, to entertain a cut, I think would be short-sighted on hardware. Right, nice for you.
I gave you this copy, did you ever find the original?
I don't.
No. Cause I put this in your box, you probably have to.
No.
So Dave signed this, and this was discussed a lot at the Parks and Rec Committee at the time. We didn't vote on anything other than suggesting it, cause Mary Jo was there too. And this started back in twenty-two, before that was discussed many times about management of that woodlot. And walking trails and clearing out the dead stuff and planting better trees in place of those that are not suitable. So this got started, then it got put on hold. Because it was the wrong time of the season, you don't wanna cut this when the oak wilt is out there or whatever it is. But then. They got put on hold because the pricing lumber was really cheap. So this has just been sitting all this time, cause the board voted to do this back in twenty-two. But because of all those factors, it never got processed. And I think the things you're saying right now are big factors that were also, we get seen like. Not the time to do this because it says right in the contract, we can terminate this upon mutual agreement. And with the fact of the compost and the waste and uh really, what's the bigger picture now in certain situations? That I think we should table this and get out of this contract.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
It was a nice conversation, uh, uh, con- conversation I had with our council, uh, he's uncomfortable as I am with an open-ended. And would like to friend, be a friend, basically, and close this thing down. On the contract if we decide not to move forward, it's not my decision at all, obviously. Uh, and to, to get this on a frontward footing, which I would, I personally would prefer. So thank you for the background, Larry.
I think it sounded good at the time as we went along, but then all these factors changed and now the whole world has really changed, and I think we need to start over.
Okay, Karen?
Yeah, same thing. I, I think we should uh terminate the contract and uh wait till we're ready to find out what's gonna happen. And then move ahead from there.
Michelle?
Agree.
You agree to what?
I agree to not moving forward with the Martell project right now and putting in unfold. Getting out of this open-ended contract. And um, uh, with everything else that's going on that may be a factor, I think at this point, we just, we have to be patient and. Wait.
Okay, and I think if you explain it to uh Martell, Phil and Campbell, so please. Yeah, I felt a little awkward to, to read on that and, and, and mediate that appropriately, if it was something important.
When, when we met with him and then the extension office was out there, Ben Schuering, his whole group, I think he was very cooperative, very knowledgeable. And I don't think he would have any issue with the fact of what we're doing, it's the right thing to do. So.
I, I also don't know, um, what he's done to date. I know there were some trees marked out there. I'm assuming there's gonna be a invoice coming with something he may have done since twenty-fourty-two.
My understanding was we don't mark the trees that needed to be removed, some of them had value, some were dead, some just because of other situations. And that he would get fifteen percent of the revenue generated from it, but I don't think there was anything discussed that the marking. Um, was gonna be done and not cut. So I don't know if he does have some expectations from us. Because he did do that on the idea he had a contract that we were going to cut two years ago. I don't want to be inappropriate and, and pay for something I don't want to, but on the other hand, it's, it's service we've provided, and we changed our mind, it's not his fault.
Good points. Uh, Mary Jo, did you have anything further before I go to the audience?
No, I agree with, with uh what you're, you know, what's being said and, and to wait, and I do know Keith will work with us. I don't, I, I don't see that being a problem.
Okay.
Whether it be, you know, absolving the agreement and, or making up a new one or whatever, and if we owe him something for uh marking trees, which I highly doubt, cause. We're gonna hire him eventually. Um, yeah.
I had to end up with the audience, uh. Do you wanna, do you wanna at least shout out Dame and that way in case somebody doesn't know you, I know you're Brian, but.
Absolutely. You know, Brian Davy, I worked with Susan as a volunteer on Parks and Rec.
Okay.
I joined the committee about two years ago, and one of the things that was being talked about was the woods.
Can you, can you come up here?
I can, yeah.
To at least get a microphone, that way anybody that's lying can hear you a lot. Well, I guess it's just, you were very chill with this.
Yeah, I joined uh Brian Davy, and I joined uh Parks and Rec about two years ago. One of the many things that we talked about, there's been a lot of great stuff happened. Um, but one of the things that was more near, dear to my heart, that I was asked to maybe do a little more. Um, research into, and that was how to handle this twenty-acre woods back here, obviously it's part of our Parks and Rec, so. How can we make that more uh usable? How can it be more beneficial to um people within the community rather than just having one path through there? So. Um, I mean, I put together, I don't know if you wanna see this uh quick four slides I have, but it, it's a summary, basically, of what we've been talking about.
We, we have the availability.
Yeah, I'm gonna share.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you, are you able to screen share without being the host?
What's that?
Are you able to screen share right now? It's not letting you. Should say, like, share content at the bottom. Yep, cool.
Whoa. Can we get the full screen? Brian, you're probably gonna do that.
I have to do that. Maybe like early reach of my technology.
Okay, that's my, what, what? Uh, I, do you see it over there?
Oh, I could see it better before.
Can see it better before. Roll, roll your chair over there.
Hey, hey.
Sorry, you know, mine's on the other one there, Jason.
Yep.
Okay, so, you know, this is what. I put together based on my experiences of what we've been talking about the last um two years about this business. Uh, and that is, number one, this was, um, talking about doing the um, what did it say, select harvest? It was. According, I, I sat down with Keith Martell, basically, he says, we're gonna manage the woods, that's what we're, I've been asked to do. Um, managing these woods was never part of the Parks and Rec five-year um plan. Um, it was not included in the survey that's sent out. So it is, I mean, it has been brought um to uh the. Uh township board as well as to the public, Keith Martell has been here, he's talked with people and so forth. Um, see, let me go back to the original here. Let me out, Jason, go back to the first slide.
Uh, if you hit the back button, it should go back. Backspace on your keyboard.
I've lost it.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess. So again, we're talking twenty acre, um, of woods. As I say, Keith Martell calls this more management of woods, we had basically what it was. I don't know, there was some sessions with the public. Um, and uh Keith is a very, very sharp, very smart, well-experienced person in uh in the forestry, been doing it for fifty, sixty years. Obviously, nobody's talking about. By and large, what he's always done is uh about ninety percent or more of his work is for privately announced. So obviously, there's a different set of circumstances that he isn't only dealing with. And that is someone who owns a plot of land, who wants to manage it and needs help. So, since he rarely works with the public, uh, around public processes, mainly because the D N R is usually getting involved. So, you know, obviously, his rationale for um managing is to uh. It, it's obviously got a boon for the wildlife, um, it improves the overall tree health. We're getting rid of um diseased trees, helps thin the canopy, so she opens sunlight to uh sun-tolerant. Uh, species and so forth. Obviously, the older trees, you have a life span. Um, and, and they will, you know, not be there forever. Um, and just an overall improvement of the tree quality as well as to um increase the types of trees that you have. So, um, like I said, the previous slide. Um, as far as harvesting or managing, or whatever you wanna call it, select cutting. Uh, has never been part of the five-year um Parks and Recreation Plan. In other words, it was never a line item in those plans. It is not currently, and it was not part of um the survey that we requested. That people say, what do you like about the parks? How much do you use them? It'll be another slide, it'll be another slide. Um, to me, this is kind of a major change. Uh, to a parch, uh, obviously, the, the main part here. And um, I think it'd be nice to have um a more public input, I'm not sure how we go about that. Um, there are alternatives to what we're doing, or what we were considering doing. It's not absolutely mandatory, as Keith would say. It's um, you know, he said, basically, if you start getting a lot of pushback from the public, he goes, it's not worth it. He says, there's a hundred and fifty trees we're looking at. Um, he's having a hard time getting loggers because um it's not a great deal of trees economically for, unless he can find somebody to use saying. You know, like a, a little guy, small guy that he can trust to do the right kind of work, cause sometimes they get in there, they just tear everything. So he says, you know, there are so, those he trusts and those he, those. And obviously, the market right now, uh, we, we went to a bunch of mills last year, we went to waters. We went to all kinds of folks to get some information and experience, and even then, they were talking, you know, I'm shooting ten loads out. You know, a few months ago now, I'm shooting one load a week. So. Water mills are shut down, so not exactly a great time economically. Uh, to be in the lumber business. So, uh, in my opinion, there's all kinds of alternatives. Yes, we can manage it. Um, but there are a lot of state lands right now, that are not currently managed. In other words, the D N R does not go in. And do this cut type of select cut or managed cut or what have you. If you look at the Haynes Center is not doing it, I mean, the trees are, yeah, there's dead trees, there's trees that are broken. Um, there is some clutter, Arctic Fines doesn't do it, Marley Lake. And, and neither of the South Parks, either the Parks, I mean Higgins, North, North South are managed. The D N R, those, yeah, they're clear for electric lines, or they're clear for a road, but it is not. You know, these are not woods or park situations that are managed. So, um, but I was told, yeah, nobody uses that space, therefore, we should go ahead and do the cut. Um, there is really only one path right now through the woods, and it is somewhat managed. I got in trouble a couple of years ago, cause I cut some trees and somebody thought I was back there, we'd taken. Which you couldn't get through, I mean, there were some huge trees that were down, so that is part of the management, to try to keep it as open. So. Um, obviously, he says, when you start, I said, how bad is the, the harvesting? And he goes. Says, you wouldn't wanna go there, you won't, you won't wanna see it. He said, it'll look like hell for a few years. And obviously, they don't pick the tops, they leave, there's gonna be that much more clutter than uh what is currently in the woods. So, um. You know, I, I'm saying that there's alternatives, and if nobody's using the space, I think we can maybe do some things to help entice the use of the space. But I'm sure like to get, I mean, I, for being a board decision, I think it's more um a public. There should be a significant amount of um public input, because it is a public space. And yes, I know sometimes we say, we know best and we're gonna take care of you. But I think at this point, it's kind of whether you like your, things well done or over easy, it feels like. You're both excited, and you're gonna end up at the, the same point again. So. I also know that when there was a meeting, I just said, I, I mentioned. You know, the people on Kennedy Beach here are gonna be the most impacted, cause it is right there. And um, there's like, oh, you know, it'll be fine, it's all trouble. And I understood that. Um, supervisor, you already had a meeting with them, and when I found out, I. Gone down and start talking to some more folks, and I go, yeah, yeah, we met with duty, he said, hey, they're gonna do this, and, and what they heard was nothing you can do about. That's not the right approach, sorry. You know, I'm not trying to bemoan what, what has happened in the past, I'm just saying. Because it is a public space, I think there needs to be a little more.
Say something to them. We tried, we really did try, we had Martell come to the meeting, we had to speak to the public.
Yes.
It wasn't just a one-meeting conversation.
That's, yeah, I, I didn't know, I said a couple of times before, but.
And as far as getting more public input, I mean, look at how we got a hundred people on that survey. I mean, you know, what more can we do to get people to purchase?
That's a really good point, I understand there's a lot of apathy, and, and uh. But sometimes I also hear and I see people when, when the D N R has, and the state has just cleared up places and they're just. Oh, my God. So it's, it's kind of like uh flavor of the day and whatever people are.
It's surprising to say you would wish to maybe postpone any.
Yes, sir, I think that you, you kind of already come, I was just in a, yeah. So, yeah, I think we're here.
Well, and I, I, yeah, I appreciate um your opinions on a certain way, Martin, as well, and anyone's opinion on it. Um, it, it predated me, um, I, although I did sit as a police chief, I sometimes didn't have my hat on right, yeah, but. Uh, for hearing, but uh I, I kind of stayed in my lane, so thank you.
Yeah. I regret, sorry, I didn't mean it.
No, you're fine. No, you're fine. Yeah. Of course, you know, of course, there are work sessions, uh, it probably isn't, really doesn't seem about probably wherever we put them, I hope we're gonna get more, much more participation than what we have now. This is the kind of thing that people would like to see, uh, obviously with the board and public, and I, I really love these. Um, the Tuesday nights are an action, basically, often discussion and, and things like that, and, and if you ever come to that Tuesday night one, you have no idea whether anybody discussed anything. So. Right, thank you very much. I also, thank you. I also wanted to share, uh, Jim Osley also had kind of weighed in on this as well. Again, he's a compost manager and mostly, you know, he's running again, I think, or I mean, not I think in November, but. Our, that's a question, and he had, I'm gonna read this, because I think it's, it, it's. Yeah, he, he says, well, I applaud the effort to manage the township resources, and I don't feel this is proper time to undertake the project. Uh, he couldn't be here to go to their doctor's appointment, uh, unable but wanted me to have this or reward to have this. Uh, this is a beautiful parcel and with many larger, medium grow pine and oak. There, there are very few parcels with this type of growth for any township. And he says, there is, in his opinion, too much cutting and unsustainable rate of forest management on the properties near the populated areas of Harris Township. There is talk of expanding the walking path and accessibility to this parcel of cutting, most pristine resource would be detrimental to the parcel's potential. Um, he doesn't elaborate on that, but I have not seen any formal management proposal for the site. What is proposed to be taken, what will be left, and what will be done with branches slash tops? Gonna put the wood we use, where is a staging area, and how it would be restored when the contractors finish. We have all seen some managed cuts, uh, look like, we'll see what they look like later. Uh, what is the revenue to the township, what's the potential cost, how does the cost impact the overall aesthetics of the area, and is the revenue worth, worth the cost? And then the parcel has been growing and contributing to beauty of the township for a century, there is no need to set it back right now. Those are potential contract address contractors' responsibilities. Uh, the current contract, I can tell you, only, only talks about marketing the trees that are now earning whatever. Uh the current contract, I can tell you, only only talks about marketing the trees that are now ordering whatever. And then are the advocated play up after the number is gone. That certainly is a whole other contract piece that has to be made out and spelled out. So in short, he thinks the township should at a minimum postpone this project for a few years until an overall plan for copy can be implemented. Thanks to the board for hearing my concerns. I'll I'll be interested in the decision. And this apologies for not attending. They did reach out to Susan, our current chair, uh as well, and. Um she certainly indicated there's nothing on the radar, if you will, there at this time. For the potential um the necess- necessity of the cut for a grant that's in progress or otherwise. So. I think we probably beat this thing to death. Uh is there anybody else who wants to comment about it? And then. I guess at that point, I would, I'll share with the board what I think maybe our motion ought to be. So what I think we ought to do is maybe make make a motion to authorize, and I'm I'm happy to do this if you wish, the supervisor can mediate. A resolution of the uh current Martel twenty twenty two open ended contract for professional forestry service agreement. Are you comfortable with that?
Why didn't you say the last part of it was?
Uh the I just I didn't, which was the twenty twenty two professional forestry service agreement.
So I mean, you don't say that, but I guess the point is we want to terminate, correct? You know, I want to make sure that that's bottom line here, not application, but.
Uh res- resolution of the termination.
Yes. Because I think we want to start over.
Yeah, we do. The termination of the current one there. I'll I'll.
Does it use that word in the contract?
Yeah, also in the contract, just so you know, it does. When I say you don't really know how much we owe. The reason why I say that is is it is articulated in that document. That we do. Uh if this professional forestry service agreement is terminated prior to the completion of the scheduled harvest, landowner agrees to reimburse forester. For labor supplies spent for marketing tree boundaries, travel expenses listed below with the following rates. At that time, it was forty-five dollars an hour and marketing pay is seventy bucks a gallon with fifty-five cents a mile. So that's what we were obligated to pay for. So. I suspect that probably is going to be a comeback for that. Okay, everybody comfortable in there? I don't know. We're on to the assessor contract employment agreement. Um. I've been chasing this for a few months now. The IRS regulation changed. We have subcontractors that we employ for assessing. Which is Julie Pedro, who's M W and Associates. Uh we we discovered, like most everybody discovered, that. This I R S regulation change requires that this person, even though they're subcontract, they have a. A uh a employee, i.e. an employee contract with the township. And um and they're they're apparently charged by other town to her. In a company by other townships that have crossed this bridge already. Was three hundred dollars. And so. We've been going back a couple of different times, but we now have uh documents from our attorney, and they have also been run by the M W associates and Julie Pedro. In which uh one contract will provide for the three hundred while it takes away three hundred on the opposite side of the uh. In the subcontracting. So it's got some cost merger for the township, accomplishes the IRS regulation. And bringing things into oil. So I I would like to see us uh dispense with that also on Tuesday night. So I took the paddle off, I guess. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, very good. Okay, uh moving on to number fifteen, Michelle, you you. You have anything on this library number?
I will know more tomorrow. They're having their uh. Their board meeting tomorrow, but we may possibly have an opening um. From our garage appointed. And I will know more um. It's next month. As far as like we need to appoint a new board member.
So it's informational and it's a work session that may be next month as well.
And then the D B A board appointments um.
We would be, our intent probably to open up the library board appointment for a period of a month or something, so if there's some people that are interested to get it on the website, they're on the. To serve once they advise us of that status. Okay, now we're on to sixteen, Z B A board appointments, Michelle.
These are just, it's nothing new. It's just reappointments for James Sorburn and um. Mike Briggs for the uh D B A board.
And they both have indicated that they wish to continue, right? And I know both are very active on the Z B A as well. Right, we're good. So we'll be needing a uh motion to approve those for the periods of time. Do you have those?
Maybe I do have an appointment based.
Number seventeen, on to the year of sixty, excuse me, sick time, the fact of February twenty one of twenty twenty five, Michelle.
Well, Lynn and I have been trying to educate ourselves on these changes, and we've we've done some training. Um we plan on doing more. Now, all the questions have been answered as far as um. The how tos, but um we were happy to realize that um. For our full-time people, we are already more compliant with the what's happening instead for for all employees, including. Including. Seasonal employees. For every hour's work, every thirty hours' work, they receive one hour of paid sick time. And. We're figuring out, we've talked with Jim and um. For the township, the most effect will be with the fire department and how we're going to track that. Um here in our building. I mean, it really doesn't affect the police department because they don't have part time. But um.
We do.
Oh, yeah, you do. I'm sorry. Yeah, you do. So we're we're putting together a format to follow to keep track of this information. Um. Uh the the good thing we did find out with it. Uh in regards to like the seasonal employee piece, I think we can um. With some like this, but I think we can maintain because there's a clause in this that says. If they, if the employee doesn't work for six months. Then they lose any time they had accrued. So with a seasonal employee, you're only working them six months at a time. So as long as we stay within those parameters. Um it will help. Uh minimize. I mean, there there may still be people who, you know, they're going to get some hours, but it would minimize the amount. Um and also has to do with that that carryover piece where when they come back, if they get fired back for the next season. As long as we don't fire him back any sooner than the six month in between. Then we'll be, we'll be covered with that. But again, just just informational to let y'all know that if a company can take for that in February, we need to.
The February library done that, that came out of the Supreme Court ruling, third three uh to. Basically adopt and amend a tactic that was deemed unconstitutional by the legislature. Uh it circumvented the petition initiative process in two thousand and eighteen. So. Obviously, unless the legislature picks it back up and does something different. This Michigan Supreme Court is is in absence of a statute, no law. So. Anyways, uh you guys attended, thank you for attending that as well and. We'll we'll see how it affects us once we're able to kind of get a little bit of us working out as well. So. Um but the one.
I don't think we should be worrying about an hour of sick time when we're handing out seventy percent weight increases. I mean, that's.
However, we have to do it. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
And I'm employee driven, so I understand.
Right. I mean, that's nothing.
That's, that's, that's correct. We just, what what is it nothing is the accounting practice to account for it. That's uh basically what Michelle's kind of probably across the bow. Uh that it it will exist and and making sure that she's given the uh the board. The free he shouts uh uh update for the Michigan townships uh to make sure that we're compliant with those things. So. We always want to be in compliance, no matter what it is. I concur. Thank you. Um. Board members. Final comment. Very, very. All right, okay. All right, Michelle.
This is the end of the meeting, final comment.
I don't have any email.
Hey.
My agenda.
Give everybody in the mindset of we'll have to approve the police and fire budget approval at our Tuesday meeting, which we already had the budget period for. Um. That's really all I have. Well, that's not true. But I hope four oh two nine, we're going to have to approve that too, and that should be, I haven't seen that one yet, but I don't think I've been that long enough. Anyways, yeah.
We should put that. I'm just, I don't think we need that lotion. That was a uh an operational thing that has to be conveyed to the county.
Right.
It's just a piece that comes off that. Very joyful. Still here, still with us?
Uh. Think so?
Yep, yep. I'm all set. No comments. Thank you all for letting me. Um no, I'm glad we have Zoom. Haven't been up to this point, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm glad I didn't miss the conversations. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think my only comment was I didn't want people. Oh, go to one more thing. Uh on the nineteenth is the R T A V. Uh which will be at the Ridgefield uh township at ten AM. You know, the agenda looks like for that, is there issues?
Mary Jo was the secretary. She might know.
Yeah, we have two guest speakers coming. Um. At Atzigo. Oh, geez, I wish I. Actually, in our Word docs, you might find it. Because I I made the agenda, I just haven't printed it out yet. Um so somebody from Atzigo uh Economic Development, I think.
Yeah.
And then um Vanessa Varner is speaking also on some new stuff that's coming. Down from the state from. Emergency management kind of stuff. I'm sorry, I'm not clear on that. But it is in the agenda that's on our. You're finding the words document, I just haven't seen it.
Okay. My final comment, I didn't want to, but I think building a zoning result of the report with Jason did submit it is on vacation, so he did appear today personally. Uh Jim, see, I'll be out here.
Yeah. I just want to add, make one quick comment on the day, see, the director, they he mentioned about the um. Issues down with the South State Park primarily.
Yes.
I think my concern is, is that in the letter, he's implying that maybe we need to expand. The infrastructure as far as the parking and the boat launch facilities and everything else like that. All I see that doing is is if you build it, they will come, and you'll still have the problem out on the road. I think we need to address that. And because I've been here a number of years, when they expanded like the west launch. They fill it up and they still park up and down the road. When they expanded the salt boat. You know, facility and the the amount of parking there, they still overloaded on these major weekends. And the people will come, and it it doesn't solve that problem. All we are doing is exasperating. The usage on the lake, which we hear numerous times. About how many boats are out there and how much how the crowd is. So we're just moving that problem and maybe probably exasperating. And not solving the problem by just adding more parking. We could pay the whole thing and people would come. But like.
We have any suggestions?
Yeah, I I'd suggest that, yeah, we we give it the D N R and tell them there's a problem. And and let's not solve it by making a problem. Taking the problem and making it worse on the lake and still having the problem of parking. You know, I I think we talked about raising the the rates there. You know, and um you know, as far as parking tickets and things like that, they're controlling it. I I don't want this letter, I think it's a good idea to notify them of the issues that we that. We see there. But if you make it, you're not going to solve the issues by just adding more parking. I think that's going to just exasperate our. Uh the the issues we have on the lake with, you know, too many boats, too many people. And it'll also, I think, um. Dusty, or no, treasure. Larry had mentioned about just even the traffic coming down by. Gibbles and that area, you know, if if you bring more people into the area, it's going to exasperate all the traffic problems. So. I just wanted caution. Not to suggest a solution. Let's look at the solutions and come up with something that really solves, but not. And it, you know, it exasperates problems. Thank you.
Any other board member comment? Okay.
Thank you. Um I'd just like to mention also, um okay, again, Jim's comment. From an environmental aspect, the D N R brings in more boats than all of our rodents combined. Us, we're over, well over a million, well over a million a year. Aquatic invasive species are not stopping. In the Great Lakes, there are a hundred and eighty known environmental uh problems, aquatic invasives, not as known. Find final cure for any of them. Uh so from the community has supported the foundation. By helping to pay for the seventy thousand dollar boat wash at the South State Park. Um the community has helped fight aquatic invasives by uh supporting the diver assisted suction harvester road. That is sucking up the Eurasian water milfoil and starry stone more that we know that we have. There's so many on the way curly pond weed, I could go on and on and on and on. The D N R has done minimal to help us enforce boat wash use at the parks. Saying, well, what do you do about the rodents? It's not the rodents. It's the South State Park that's bringing in uh eighty percent, ninety percent. Of the aquatic invasive species. So um that's another problem there. You know, the D N R has no money. But suddenly they have money for more parking to bring in more boats and more invasive species. So um thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think, yeah, Jim and I had a conversation about this. I I'm not confident they'll spend any money on infrastructure at all, but um certainly, it it's something to be considered as you talk about. When you need to solve it, uh Jim, uh the parking fines are rooted in the Supreme Court administrator's office. I've been there personally myself. Over the years, trying to get them to increase it to be a detriment instead of a uh permission to park uh. For the same fees that you pay for a home or for otherwise. Um and uh I I I I'm not sure that the. Extended temporary parking, they're pushing things north and pushing things south uh in there. Um. They just continue to overload the park. Uh and I know in my dealings over the years, my previous job, um I didn't see much willingness to cooperate. Other than to bring the outcome and howdy. Um and certainly not sharing any revenues as well from there. I have sent in those meetings that the. Chief Shensky is going to send in again. Uh with powers that be uh through the regional, and then we did get some in Lansing just before I left. Uh everything we asked for uh from Lansing was not approved. Um. We were to try and alleviate uh any of what we're all talking about out there. And I think. Chief Shensky is trying to find another route to at least get it. His job is to get it off the road and uh more in a more safe environment. Um of course, nobody wants to overload the lake more with folks with invasive species. And of course, once again. There, and no one can refute, I can anyways, the uh if you build it, they may come, and they may. Um the question is, when I build it, um I don't know how to crack this nut. Um it it is much as I also received a call from Bob Fiey yesterday, uh. You know, still looking for the law that was lobbied for invasive species. Uh to basically wanting to know if we could have our local police department. Sit there and enforce that. And uh, in my opinion, it has always been an administrative rule, it should be. They have a bigger police department. With authority peace officer for administrative rules of the South Higgins Lake State Park. That we deployed at the township for years in its entirety for thirty-six square miles. So we are just bumping heads all the time at this. So I appreciate your comments. Um uh we'll certainly talk amongst board members here um and and. We, you know, discuss that wisdom, chief.
Yeah, I'm just like saying one thing.
I wanted to defer to you. I wanted to defer to you because it was in your mission.
Uh, no, I appreciate the comments and uh, I would like everyone to know that I do have on my radar this fall to work with uh. Low commission manager on the no parking on front of the park. Um, to try to get that posted as a tollway zone. So then we're uh able to legally tow those vehicles when they park in the posted no parking zone. Other than the decision and the sixty five dollar uh no parking ticket.
Are they the ones who decide that, the the road pension?
Well, we're. He's currently looking to see what we have to do to get that posted as a no or tollway zone. Um, he's not sure off the top of his head. It's been more research on it. Uh, that is one thing we're gonna work on in the fall when when slow down.
In my guess, since I went through and got all of our traffic, all traffic controllers codified to the state. Many moons ago, uh, when I first got to be chief. You'll be right back to the same um. State of Michigan bureaucratic uh piece over at the seventh district uh for MSP traffic services. And so either way, we're knocking on the ears of the people that are not. Put on help in our our individual problem. They truly will always view us as a three month thing. People need to just put off with stuff. And go that route. I've actually been told that before. Um, so you gotta run the battle ahead of yourself. Uh, Derek and um, and. So I appreciate the comments today. Uh, if anybody else has any other comments, board members or others. Sir, if you could come on up and identify yourself and. Okay. There's someone behind you too. So, okay, very good.
I I just wondered if you had to come to the table and eat and don't I?
No.
No, I, uh, my question, Brian, is when you dealt with people from the um parks division in the past. Did you deal with the DNR organizations with the parks and rec? And do you have any um comments about like, you know, how many of that went or whether you're more successful in one or the other?
Yeah, uh, we actually dealt with parks and rec directly. Because anything that has to kind of finds itself or the state park. Uh, is they have a chief, Ron Olson, uh, who manages that section. And that's who we went uh have gone through in the past. Um, and some people, I think that the invasive folks have been talking about for quite some time too as well. Um, and so uh successes there have been very few. Um. And once again, I mean, they have a place. Uh, locally in our township, but with the state, state of Michigan managed run place, so and 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 with. For some reason, they would be in, I think, the second largest state park in the state. We we don't seem to get much attention.
Oh, there has been some discussion because we have had meetings with the park people and. That our thoughts are possibly turning to the DNR department rather than to the parks and rec. And so that's what I was.
Great idea. If they'll listen to it, sure. Now, uh. Chief, you you take notes to that. And if you guys have a contact, we share it with you.
We're just, we're just starting a discussion about that. I just wanted to let you know and.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate it. It's pretty fun. I you hear a frustrated guy be reported today myself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir, I saw your hand back there.
Yep.
Come on up and have a seat and have a double affair.
I'm trying to stay away from those. As much as I would love them, I like to hand this out to you. Um, these are my notes regarding a conversation I had with Pat Brooks, a rook. Of Missoula, Montana, in Oregon. Are you Dave Kiffen?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I have a few messages. You know, if you had a chance to ever talk to them or not, you 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 did. I I am, I. I am a.
I have still not to the point where I want to understand staff yet, adjusting studies. It's not.
I have forty years and I still don't want to understand. But uh, the main thing that I'm asking here, you know, those are my notes. And um. He is a superintendent of the system, which is the step system, not the wastewater treatment plan. The problem that I've got is. All the information that the townships and the residents receive. From Gula and other sources. Are more of the propaganda, the positive notes that the manufacturers uh present. Um, Missoula, Montana actually was in a twenty year life cycle study. For the city of Lacey, Washington, which Orango is a step system manufacturer. Presented as being a star child. Um, you read the notes, you'll understand it is not a star child. Um, the step system. Has extremely high. O N M costs. And that is supported by EPA technology bulletin that I have. Uh, it's also supported by Matt Lombard of uh Michigan Rural Water Association. Uh, he was actually a presenter at the Gula. Uh, meeting and I asked him regarding the issue. Um, since I'm familiar with the system, I know the questions to ask. He confirmed that the um screens. Uh, are a problem, that they're a high maintenance issue. Um. Had a Freedom of Information Act uh of the reports for Southwest Berry County. Dealing with all of their fallouts at the residents. That's thirteen percent, works out to be almost one a day. City of Fort Wayne, Indiana did a uh study of a the. Slow pressure system, which is a step system to a conventional system. They determined that a conventional gravity system is less expensive. Uh, the biggest thing that I've asked, and I asked Gula this at their last meeting. Is to allow me to be a president, to present and to have Pat Bro. Zoom in. He's willing to zoom in and talk to people. Um. Hasn't happened. Behind the scenes, there were some conversations, which were kind of a little shady in my book, and I'm not gonna bring it up with the individuals. But what I'm asking this board to do. Is have them zoom in. You guys here for your own ears. Because for me to say it, even though I have forty years of acknowledgement and knowledge of this. Type of stuff. It doesn't have the. Where we're all, because I'm just someone talking, trying to knock down this system. The fact of the matter is. Um, when this started. And even today, if the system goes in, I can make money. I'm in the industry. I sell all the plumbing products for. My company can pick up. In fact, I turned down the Orango system to represent here in Michigan, which is representing the manufacturer. The service. The talk on. I even have it in an email where I turned it down, said I had a conflict. I'm not looking for making money. I'm looking for what's in the best interest of the residents. And. I hear Gula moving forward, moving forward, doing this. Doing uh different things on uh land. Well. If. The decision is not to go with the slow pressure step system. Water treatment plant is designed differently. So everything that's taking place through Gula. Is a waste of time and waste of money. And my question is why is Gary's Township so involved in Gula? What is the benefit? Now, at one of the Gula meetings, in fact, um. Uh, Jerry, um, my hand, Montana. Even commented about Missoula, Montana, and he talked to somebody over there and they said they had problems with the strings. That they plug up. They plug up for multiple reasons. You can see uh some of my notes. Uh, deals with the bio screens. Um. But the question is, is he only went to the screens? He didn't talk about all the other stuff that you'll see in these notes. You know, with freezing. Um, the maintenance costs. You know, the life of the pumps. And when they say life of the pumps, here's one of the propagandas that the manufacturer do. Pumps will last for twenty years. The windings, the motors will last for twenty years. The pump on the end lasts between three and five years before they have to be anything. And that's the problem I've got. I'm trying to get this information out. I want you as the board to hear what's going on. Not for me. Because I can speak all day long. I can present you tons of information which I have to Gula. I don't know if you even see this when I presented to Gula. I really think most of it gets buried and disappears. Because it goes right down to, in fact, the twenty year life cycle in Lacey, Washington. Uh, this uh. In that, even talks about the high maintenance costs that became a runaway for Lacey. You guys just went through an accounting issue. Last thing you want to do. They're going through a major, major headache. And people need to start talking about the costs of the O N M of this. It's chief to put in. There's not a question. It's your low cost. But when you get past that. The cost goes sky high and you're just gonna be chasing. In fact, Pat Brooks even commented that they're increasing the sewer bill instead of once a year. Two times a year, just trying to stand top of the O N M cost. And. Zoom in. He's more than willing to talk to you. He has no influences for any type of um foundations or anything else, which you do get in here around Michigan where there's a lot of influence. Just open. Talk to you. He's not afraid. Okay, there's been a si- uh system up in um. Uh, I'm trying to think of Forest Dunes. They had a step system. They took it out because of the high cost of uh O N M. And like I say, I don't know if you're hearing this. I speak at Gula. I present things to Gula. But I'm not seeing any reaction of anybody really doing the research. Gula's not. They absolutely are not. If I can get that information, they can. They tell me that he won't return the phone calls. He returns them in twenty four hours. I'm.
What you said.
He Pat Bro.
Oh, Pat Bro.
Okay, we will return the calls in twenty four hours.
I got you.
Gula's telling me he won't. And then I get pulled off to the side after the meeting, talked to and trying to get a wheel and deal to. And those individuals that have done it know who I'm talking about. I'm not gonna throw names out. That's not how I operate. I'm pure transparent. And I don't see the transparency. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate your information here today. And no, I have not seen this particular document that you have without. I have seen studies, which I was given to Gula. Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, board members, I I. I, have you seen this document?
Not this document in particular, but I've been knowing Mr. Cliff because. Spoke many a times that our board, we need also sharing the information that we send you to acquire to share with us.
Okay, I uh.
It looks like this just happened in June also.
This happened in, no, June, uh, June is when you called me, sir.
Correct.
And I I was not and still am not ready to digest all of that because. Um, obviously, uh, you know, you you can't ignore the eight hundred of the elephant in the room, which is. Quite simply, but a new election occurred uh in uh in our in my township, which is a portion that makes up. Uh, Gula as well uh to the as a as a corporation and uh. They obviously changed the board over and um. I think they've been pretty vocal about what they intended to do with that and uh, quite simply, but. Until they get in office to be able to to look at that. To analyze a step system when um I we have no idea for the future. I have another board with two more new board members coming in. As you heard me say a lame duck statement, and I still will say that I'm as transparent as the world is. I know I'm portrayed as not, apparently. Uh, by you, or you or another member of United or something initially. And I I'll say it publicly what I've said in writing. I am not into the politics, personal destruction, business or organizations. Hey, everybody at the end of the day wants to do the right thing for Higgins Lake. Everybody has a multitude of of uh. Of of studies uh and. Um, for some reason, they all ran into a zero sum game, which kind of puts us all at this, what you feel and I feel. Who does a board do or whatever and it's somewhat a stalemate, if you will. And uh, and certainly we have to look at what Ryan intends to do. Will they do it? I don't know. I don't know those players yet. We we have to forge relationships to figure out. Is that sewer system and these special assessments still going to be able to exist? I don't think anybody out here can tell you that. I mean, it's unfair. If anybody says that we could or put this board or anyone else in that position would be unfair at this point. And so I appreciate information. But I, and and when I say I'm submitting it, I am submitting it. And ultimately, when we do get a new board, our our new board, wherever those members might be. Um, that I'm I'm committed to a a the complete outcome transparency piece. Even PowerPoint generated as to what options might be, what's on the table. That can happen, what could happen, what don't that happen, which maybe it does. Um, and uh. Be honest, we're going through the help of chatbot and AI uh, uh, I I think they can submit things really well. I've been doing it the old fashioned way. And then I'm gonna double check work with the chatbot AI to make sure before I go on record is absolutely publicly. Uh, with this, with, and I vote candid with uh Jim back there. He'll tell you from from Gula that. That, you know, this this sector has to be a return on investment here uh that is. Proper with that type of or a very of a. Taxation. So I'm the new head table. You got my thoughts, uh, okay? And uh, and I appreciate information. But I can only digest it as my as my organizational and OCD mind allows me to. Boyfriend with you. Uh, so for the other four board members. I would let them speak for themselves if you so wish, Mr. Kenevick. Okay. Uh, uh, good. Eric, you're good.
Again, thank you for taking the time to come and talk to us and inform us with your knowledge. Um, I too believe that. May it September, a couple of months, we're gonna have a new board. I don't think it's fair to. Try to do anything at this point with the board that we have. It's not gonna be what the board is a couple of months from now. Um, it doesn't mean that we don't need to be informed. Um, I just think it's something that's not gonna. Be pertinent right now, a couple of months from now, maybe.
Okay. Any other further comments?
All I'm asking is. To allow. Mister Bro. To zoom in. To either your board meeting or Gula. And basically present. Just like everything else is presented. It has nothing to do with those that are on the board.
Well, it does. If the same people aren't gonna be here two months from now, they won't be getting that information. That's the point I'm trying to make.
It'll be documented. Because it'll be video.
Is it the same?
Thank you. Appreciate it. If anybody knows, somebody got it.
Uh. I have one little one.
Good.
I I had a little one. Um, I appreciate um. I appreciate his his bringing that forward. Um. I always am about researching things to death, so uh I'm I'm okay with. You know, if we decide we wanted to zoom him. The the thing that stuck out most in his conversation is that. It sounded like. It's more about. The residents. And not the lake. And I feel like our township has a huge responsibility. Only because Eagle and DNR don't take it on as serious um of protecting Higgins Lake. So. That's my comment. If if it's for the residents. Then, you know, that's a little short sighted. If it's for the betterment of Higgins Lake. Now we're talking. I am not picking up against any type of improvement. I'm saying against that system. Because it's not good for the lake. It's not good for the residents.
That's what I sort of heard uh today, Mr. Kenevick was, is that. That that even if the sewer was completed, this is a wrong system. That's me correctly. In in your opinion, then of course, Mr. Brooks could certainly shed more light on that. Uh, for uh the world, if you will, in the in the future. And I do appreciate that and I I take that under serious consideration.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, people. Any other comments, board members?
Nope.
Hey, really good. I take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by public squires, uh, supported by trustee Newton, the public discussion. Motion to do with Jerry by book squire, uh, supported by trustee Newton, any further discussion? Always fair, indicate by saying aye, aye, propose the same motion, Terry. Thank you, I appreciate all the discussion, thank you so much.